Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all so much for coming to our first meeting of the month. April. Just had this past Sunday. Easter Sunday. And I hope you don't mind me saying that I hope that the fact that by Christian nation that we have celebrated the rising of our Lord Jesus Christ. We're blessed to live in this country where we are able to speak about their freely. So we're grateful that we was able to live through that and be here to say another year that we've witnessed that type of service. So as we start this new year after Easter, we thank each one of you all for coming to our meeting tonight and hope that our meeting will be enriching to you. Because we're excited about guests that we have this evening. That you'll be able to know a little bit about the history of Moss Point. So we'll start with the roll call and we'll get into our agenda.
Honorable Chapman.
President.
Here.
President.
Honorable Dubos, Honorable Changers, Honorable Chestang.
Here.
Honorable Miller.
Here. Kevin Corum. Honorable Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. Well, tonight, for our special guest minister, I asked a friend of mine whom I've known for a few years now to come and lead us in devotion. Bishop Walt Wilson from the Apostolic Fellowship Assembly of Jesus Christ Incorporated right here in the city of Moss Point. Who is yours, sir?
Ladies and
No relation.
Hold on by the blood.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna forgive me for facing this way at Moss. I want to keep myself within the thirty. Mayor Knight and Alderman here and also these repentable and supporting quick staff that serve this city of Moss Point. It's an honor to do this tonight. I really am. It's a delight. Honored to request that brother Darius Wilson. And what I say here is there is no doubt about it. Thank you, Shubba. But look, Shubba. And also to Alderman. Shout out who we spent twenty years.
Yes, sir.
conversing and working and serving Shubba and Quora, which is both which are something so and also my delight. And wife Carol. I'm so glad she was able to come. She's really been sick and she's up today, so I'm a happy dog. Do well with her, say why. But all of you are just again, a pleasure to be here. Will you pray with me today? Now all of all creation, we want to thank him. Life, strength. What I'm sure you love us. We actually continue blessing upon this city. We actually don't continue God's about mayor, the Honorable Billy Knight. They respect it all person and each warrior they represent. City of this river. This city of the river. Grandest vision, where peace may reign, then people of his spirit. Now, in this meeting, we tend it the protocol objective for this evening. We have the protective meeting of minds and hearts. Father and Grandfather, we expect that your will be done. We are humbling us in the name of Christ. Help me say
My hand.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Stay for the first meeting. Preservation.
Indivisible, evergreen.
Thank you very much. We do have one adjustment that we need to make to the agenda. Then item of the main agenda five point three will be removed from the agenda. How police department, the chief is evaluating the ordinance six eighty three. Will we bring it to the board? We want to make sure that our police department is satisfied with the writing of that ordinance. So we're going to take that off the agenda until the chief tell us he's ready to present it. Is there any item the consent agenda? Any book member want to remove for a further discussion? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So accept the amended agenda?
Second. Most of Alderman Chapman, second Alderman Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. We have two presentation this evening. We are honored to have Dr. Oswald Harper here with us, our superintendent schools. He has a presentation that he would like to make. And then we have a special presentation from our friends out of Florida to the city of Moss Point. I will come down and participate in both of those.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Evening.
It's an honor and a privilege for me to be here, Mayor. For everyone that's here soon. Again, I'm Inspector Paul Ryan, the superintendent of Moss Point School District. Week before last, the Boy Scouts of America recognized Mayor Knight for his exemplary leadership in the city of Moss Point. And at the time we were on spring break, we couldn't have school representation there at that meeting. But I thought it would be remiss if we didn't, as a school district, come and just let you know how we appreciate your leadership in the city. One of the things that has been a cliche saying of mine is that schools are nothing but a microcosm of the communities in which they're embedded in. So as the city goes, the school district goes. So Mayor Knight and I both started in July twenty twenty one. And we both hit the ground running and have formed a outstanding relationship. And we have seen him and his leadership and what he's doing in the city. And since we couldn't be at that meeting week before last, when you were recognized by Boy Scouts of America and your leadership, exemplary leadership. We want to just pretty much tap in as a school district and let you know how much we appreciate what you're doing. Your extreme support of the Moss Point School District. And I want to present this to you, and I'm just crazy enough to believe that for both the city as well as the school district, you've got the best that you have to come.
Yes. What you got?
We weren't that. This was actually designed and made by our CTV program, our welding program. So it's a clock that has his name on it and just thanking him for everything that he does for the city of Moss Point. And this has a young picture on it right here, Mayor Knight. Still look good, but you look good back then. But just thanking him. So thank you again, Mayor.
I have gotten along with Ben, but it's been a long six, seven months of war. Got a call. I'm a little lovely lady. Well, we never met, didn't know each other, but she called and said that he had some material that my great grandfather had Moss Point. Two notebooks of church. And inside of those notebooks was a precious special item high school yearbook. Was back in the, what, nineteen hundreds? Nineteen, nineteen twenty five. Anyway, her great great grandfather, Mr. Arthur Philip Smith, was the second mayor of Moss Point. And he kept a diary, I would call it, of things that happened in Moss Point during this time. He found, wanted to have those documents and wanted to consider Moss Point to happen. And of course, I graciously accepted them. We talked several times. I accepted, she sent them to me so I could review them. Did that, and I even turned them over to the library. Laura, would you come up? He had these documents and we had a presentation at two o'clock and had a reading of some of them. Laura is the historian at the library. And we just asked her if she would come. And Elizabeth's gonna give them to me officially. She got a
I gotta tell you who we got here.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. I just want you all to know that we came as a delegation. I am Elizabeth Stone Rollins, the great granddaughter of Stone McGinnis. My sister Patricia Carol Rollins, the same. My brother Andrew Rollins, also grandson. His wife Tricia. Cindy Beck, also great granddaughter. Or granddaughter, Stone McGinnis. And that Patricia Donald, who's a great close grandmother. Oh, it's your We are the great grandchildren of William Hiddle Smith, who with his brothers David and John built a small Alan Smith Lake in the mid eighteen hundreds. We are also the great granddaughter of Arthur Hiddle Smith and Ella Brooks Smith. Arthur Hiddle Smith was four shortly after the Civil War and served as the second mayor of Moss Point. He was instrumental in the establishment of Moss Point High School and died in nineteen oh nine while serving as the Jackson County Sheriff. Our grandfather, Stone McGinnis, born in Moss Point, graduated from Moss Point High in nineteen twenty five. He lived in the house his father built on Main Street from nineteen oh six to nineteen twenty seven. As a young man, he weathered the Great Depression, became both an attorney and an accountant. He lived the work of age of ninety five. And he gave the very best advice to his grandchildren, dropping pearls of wisdom at exactly the moment that they were needed. He always said that he wanted to live a useful life. And that is what brings us here today. Stone McGinnis Smith took the time and he wrote his memories of early Moss Point. He described his life here. What the town looked like, how the people got across the river, what they ate, and what they did for fun. And he also kept his nineteen twenty five Moss Point High School graduation book. So in yet another way, our grandfather has made himself and our family would very much like to give his things to the city of Moss Point.
I would in turn just turn you go to the library where they've already began to draw out these and they got done what they do to make sure they're there so the public at large can enjoy this material and go in there and read this history. Our second mayor. Thank you all so very much. We gave them a bag for some goodness to take back to Porter with them, so. Make sure they can take back, and I won't pull them all out, but I wonder how someone who worked in the hand, they think about Moss Point. If you all got to go, you don't have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Very grateful. Thank you.
I'm gonna take up all your time.
Part of family too, that's Don, you didn't pass through, right? Pass the land Moss Point. But in Moss Point, you live in Moss Point. That's where you took a big part of the family, it's a good family, right here. That's the number of the floor. All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Good job. Thank you all. Thank you for there. That's a lot of good history. I did be part of that presentation today and it was real educational and I encourage us to go and look at it and read that material. We're down to the other comments. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if, if, if I might.
Yes.
He's probably gonna kill me for doing this, but I just want, on behalf of the mayor and board and the rest of the city staff and everyone in the city, congratulate Alderman Wilson on his recent graduation.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, I think, I think that's outstanding achievement.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. President of board on the consent agenda item one two item four point four. Under the board.
Motion to accept consent agenda.
Seven.
And most of Alderman Wilson, second Alderman Chestang to accept approved item four point one, four point twelve. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it. Main agenda five point one.
Approved decline, request to proceed with demolition of four zero one nine Carroll Street for failure to meet requirement after two extensions were granted by the director of the twenty plan.
Okay, the item we have before you today is forty nineteen Carroll Street. March twenty first of twenty twenty three, we brought this before the board. Minutes, the board gave it a six month extension which expired in November twenty fourth of twenty twenty three. We brought it back before the board December nineteenth of twenty twenty three. The board gave on a ninety day extension which expired last month, the eighteenth. So we bring it back before the board. The property owner came by the office and he said he's still working on the property. He wanted an extension. I thought that's not something that I could do because that was, that was the board's decision. So he's bringing it back for the board today to ask for another extension. I believe the homeowner is here today to address the board. I do have some drafts of the property. Some before and after pictures. This is before. And this is as it sits today. So.
And Mayor, Elizabeth has shared with me that I believe he was getting some material from other homes that were being demolished. Is that correct, you used?
Elizabeth told me that.
Yeah, okay. And that y'all are still getting complaints about the property? So and she said y'all are still getting complaints about the property?
So. That's for an extension, I understand.
Would not.
That's for an extension. What, what is that?
Yeah, I was thinking, like I said, some days more, I don't know. I don't, I didn't know. A lot of that stuff depend on my time, you know, I and I have had money to put into it or material. And then, you know, walk around, welcome. Very well, thanks. You know, just after yourself, you know, working on y'all putting in eight, ten hours a day, then you have to find time to do any well, contracting a job like that, you're doing as you said. If I was working on it eight days a week, I mean, uh eight hours a day, seven days a week, I mean, I'm too much time. Won't be enough time. But like I said, I got, I got a lot of material going on in my house, it's a whole lot better. And I, I probably should have been through the ball fixing test with fire burn, would have told the board. I got in there, started doing it a whole nother different way. I really started the whole inside out. I didn't just fix what the flat burn was. And I was complaining to everybody, like they didn't sign that. Get stuff and, or material wise, in material, inside of that, that guy, I speak. He made us a sign like that, you know. You said, that's not our thing, you can get all you want. That's where they know the problem. And it was the same side of time I had to go get, they was standing it out to the side.
Yes, sir. I have no idea. I was just letting the board know what was told to me.
I feel that's incredible. material loss. The house was gonna hook. Y'all acting like I'm some kind of menace of the house. It's the house of air property. I'm just doing my big diligence to bring it up. It belonged to the real, it was, the furniture deceased, and I'm just trying to do what I can in my spare time to bring it. You know, I got a lot of money. Lot of time, lot of trash dollars, a lot of rip off time. And, you know, I just know why I'm trying to get it in a way on a month and three months, I thought of what they tell me. Uh which dollars to do for, you know, this was six months at a time a year. You know, I have to have time to sell and every people come over there this weekend to do certain things and then they have to stop working on that. I shut down the whole week, which is this week. Dive open to it and I got to stop working, so you know. I have to have time to to do stuff like that. It'll come a long way, it'll come a long way. Got a lot of time, a lot of hours. Lot of man, I was what we do. And I come down into the door room to the place to to see about inspection, come in, see what moved the door. She told me to call some kind of, and that's what I did. Next thing, I had to stop work thing on the for this best of being there. They didn't, nobody saw me when I went that person. I had to talk to a machine. But now I'm here. You know. So you tell me.
So you're saying it's our fault that you hadn't gone look?
It's not my fault, I'm just saying when I'm trying to comply, me compliance, I'm trying to do what I can. And just act like I'm gonna roll and not trying to do anything. You know, he can look at
Is Alderman Dubos on the call? Is he on? Question's gonna be, Alderman Dubos is your Alderman and I will be interested in knowing what his concern is.
I think six months, man, I was, you know. I went down there to try to get a ramp up, which I did. And it was three months from me. And they had to come to this meeting here to get any
These are one of these meetings that we have like this. It's supposed to be giving you understanding of how much time you have. Are you saying now you didn't know how much time you had when you was here before?
Six months.
You thought it was six months?
When I went down there to pick it up.
No, no. What, what happened when you left here at the last meeting? Okay, it was three months from this meeting. So why would you think it was six months?
What now?
You said it was three months when we left this meeting, not nine days.
I went down, I said, I thought I said it's six. Only, I remembered I had a month. I went down and requested another one. Right, because Alderman got misplaced. I was down, I had to do one, but the one was in the name. He got misplaced. Somebody picked it up, they got it. I think the reason we made the permit was six months because y'all gave him a six month extension. And I think he assumed the second one was six months also, but the board only gave him three months. And I explained to him, he came to the office. I can't make the decision for him to, you know, give him an extension. So he has to come back to the board because the board gave him.
Either Alderman Sisters, Alderman Dubos is not here. You know, Alderman, got any comments about this to any?
Mayor, I'd just like to Hey, Ron, I see you've done some work. Has everybody seen the pictures? Alderman cutting him bottom down. It's, it's evident there's been some work done. Is, is it to the point Marcus where it can be closed up, which is
It's like he painted the outside of the house. Maybe that's the windows or something. House is still open.
So is the minimum requirement that he could board it up and close it up?
It would need to be at least one job. If, if the board so chooses to give it an extension, he can work on the inside of the house or completely outside. That need to be so, the elements.
Here, here.
At least we can keep the diner tappy, so. But I would recommend it.
Is it, is it gonna be?
What, what we Sorry, what we can't see on these pictures is the roof is kind of shape the roof is in. Sorry, Mayor. Okay.
Would have had a flash fire in the room, stood there from one side of the house. And when I would be in that, just fixing that, I was good if it's going in the whole house. Something's on David. On Stephen, put a little twist to whatever, to step back.
Alderman, I recommend that we give him some extension, but we'll have to decide how much additional time. You want to, could you give us any idea, based on how you're working? How long do you think it's gonna take you to do this?
I've been there all the time, I'm saying, I'm, I'm doing a whole lot. More than what I originally stood up to do once, once I got in the walls. And saying that they always ask the board to pay. But I don't mind coming here. This what you owe. Every three months, I just give me three months, I come, I need more time, three months. But six months, man, I should look good. You know, I should look really good. I mean, falling higher moving plus what I just lost this week, this week.
Alderman, I recommend that we give him six months.
That'll work. I think six months will be
Can I get a motion then?
A move.
One second.
Most of Alderman Wilson, uh, second Alderman Wilson, that we attended six months to
It should be closed. Trampled and all of the stuff like that, which they end, it just not said.
All in favor?
I'm staying.
Staying.
Mayor, I think that could be emphasized though, Ron. If you, if you concentrate on getting it sealed up where it's safe, that's, that's probably the biggest concern. It's safety. You need to be able to close it up and secure it completely. Now, that might be easier for you to do than go in there and try to finish all the inside. You know, don't get cart for the horse.
I was working both ways, but hey, I, I consider
But we need to see progress. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman.
Um five point two. Five point two.
I'm sorry, five point two. Approved decline the amendment to section B. No, as I was saying, I wrote over. Section B of the Moss Point Care, Property and Premises Ordinance submitted by Peter Cunningham, sponsored by Alderman Cunningham and Darius Wilson. This item was tabled March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. And I'm sorry, I sent this information shortly after the last meeting and when Crystal called me today and wanted to know if I ever did it. I was like, I think I copied you on it. And anyway, it all came back to me returned. So I hope y'all had enough time to look at it today. Um, Casabullas is ten inches, Goshay is six inches. And Ocean Springs is ten inches. I think ten inches may be the property maintenance code. Marcus, is that right? International Property Maintenance Code is ten inches.
That is. It leaves it open.
Okay, so it leaves it open. So we've adopted the property, international property code, but that paragraph was left blank. So my recommendation would be the ordinance that I presented at the last meeting, but the ten inches be in the grass.
To open.
Second.
Most of Alderman Wilson and second Alderman Wilson, we accept ten inches of the one fly ordinance for the grass. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's have it.
Uh, five point three was removed. Okay, five point four, approved decline a request to hire Barry Chester Junior for the vacant position of police officer submitted by Brandon Ashley, Chief of Police.
It's approved.
Second.
Most of Alderman Wilson, second Alderman Chapman. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's have it.
Five point five, approved decline a request to hire Jawan Siff for the vacant position of police officer submitted by Brandon Ashley, Chief of Police.
Most to approve.
Second.
As most of Alderman insisting, second Alderman Chapman. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm staying.
Five point six, approved decline a request to hire Nigel Harper, non-certified as a full-time firefighter submitted by Henry Goff, interim chief.
Ooh. Second. Most of Alderman Chapman, that's second. Alderman Leonard. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's have it.
Five point seven, um, discussion.
I just have an, I just have an announcement I want to make in this. In the section, Alderman, if you don't mind, and really just kind of a public announcement. Uh, we're gonna, we're reaching one, we're reaching approaching one year of our tornado. You know, it was on June nineteenth. And we're going to be sending a letter out. To all of the homes. Or the families that own the houses that have not been attended to. That is, there are still a lot of houses that were damaged by the tornado that we have not seen any kind of work. So we're going to write a letter to these residents, the owners, ask them what their intentions are. If they're having trouble with their insurance, we'd like to know what that is. And if they're not, then we're going to expect them to have work or permit, something begin to happen with the house being renovated or torn down. And we're going to give them thirty days to do that. So the letter's going to be going out pretty shortly about that. So if y'all know of anyone in the relatively hell, know that we're coming up on a year. And we want to make sure that our city is cleaned up. And there's still a lot of houses, the reason we have not, as a city, gotten involved. Is because we have not been able to get in touch with the family members. And they have not approached us. So now we're going to send a letter out to them. Make it official that we'll make them aware that something got to happen. So help us with that because that was going to be going out pretty shortly here. And we're also going to be discussing what type of recognition we're going to do for that year of the tornado. Merchant Marine Bank is going to have us some type of commemoration. And we're going to try to partner with Merchant Marine to commemorate that event, June nineteenth. And we'll let you know what that is when we decide. Okay, we're down to executive session, so can I get a motion to? Go into to decide whether or not.
Close.
Session is necessary.
Motion to close to determine the name for executive session?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Executive session is about.
It's personnel, um, mayor to do with the police department and budget, um, not not specifically a person, but a budget discussion that could impact personnel.
That is a bona fide reason for an executive session. Do we have a motion?
To go into executive session for consideration.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's have it. Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to be in executive session if anybody want to wait, strictly to talk about the budget. I'll talk to these data back there. They see, they see way there.